Oh, that's my arm. Yeah, we're catching the right edge of that monitor on that desk.
Oh, now you're working over here. I can just fix my knee. Lightning struck.
Oh, no. Oh, no. So that's gonna get Mr. Bradshaw. Because that monitor, you can see that monitor on the desk, and his seat's right. So you almost have to get it right there. It's just... Oh.
Lance, you played basketball in high school, didn't you? Did you play basketball? I knew you could have. We just, you know... You could have. That sounds like good news for some... for some.
We're gonna call our school board meeting to order. It is just after 4:00 P.M. And we have opening exercises by the Honorable Virginia Ginger Bryant.
Good afternoon, everybody. You know, Citrus County has prided itself on the fact that we support the arts. I don't care if you're plastering, or singing, or playing an instrument. Any kind of art, we support it. Now, there are counties around us that have canceled because of budget cuts. We didn't do that, and I'm so glad we didn't. We've got Mr. John Adele from Citrus High School, and he's gonna explain to you about a glorious trip our Citrus High School kids went on.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
You're welcome. Don't need the speaker.
Thank you again for having us here today. America's involvement in World War II began with the attack on Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941, and concluded with the signing of the treaty to end the war on the deck of the battleship Missouri on September 2nd, 1945. From summer of 2019 through summer of 2020, choirs and bands from all over the United States will be invited to participate in musical tributes to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II, and to honor the men and women who willingly served our great country during this time. American Music Salutes and Fan Events out of Mesa, Arizona invited us, the Singletary Chorus, to represent the state of Florida for this amazing event. On June 5th, 25 members, we have 14 of them here today, 25 members of the CHS chorus traveled to the island of Oahu to pay tribute to our country, to experience the beauty and culture of our 50th state. Our chorus performed on June 6th, which also happens to be the 75th anniversary of D-Day, on the dock of the USS Missouri. We performed a 30-minute tribute concert with the Arizona Memorial behind us and the Missouri to the right. It was a very humbling and emotional experience singing at this most hallowed place. The students represented CHS and our state very well. They brought us honor. They also gained a better perspective of World War II by experiencing Pearl Harbor, visiting the museum on site, touring the USS Bothin and the USS Missouri, and boarding a naval vessel for a tour of Battleship Row. In addition to Pearl Harbor, the students also gained an appreciation for the state of Hawaii and its culture. We hiked Diamond Head, swam in the Pacific at Waikiki Beach, visited the Dole Pineapple Plantation, and participated in the workshop with Nola Nahulu, the director of the Hawaiian Chorus at the University of Hawaii. The workshop was held at the historical Kauaihoa Church where Queen Liliu'kalani played the organ and led music. It was an amazing workshop full of Hawaiian music, ukuleles, and dancing. The last full day was spent at the Polynesian Cultural Center, where the students experienced music, street crafts, and art from all the Polynesian islands. The students performed a pre-show concert at the Cultural Center for the evening choir show entitled "Hap." This means breath. This was an amazing trip that has given these students a wonderful memory, wonderful memories that will last a lifetime. We, the Citrus High School Chorus Department, would like to thank the school board for allowing us this opportunity and for your continued support of the arts in Citrus County. We're gonna sing a song that we sang in Hawaii entitled "An Alima Hana," or in English, "The Working Hands." The translation to the Hawaiian portion here reads, "With our working hands, we care for and nurture the land, the body, and the heart." We're waiting for that.
With our hands, we will follow up this town. We will care for the earth. We will seek a world of peace. With our hands, we will watch each other's feet. We will break the spread of justice. We will share the common dream.
Please stand for the singing of the anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last flinging? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please join us in saying we pledge allegiance... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Aren't you glad we still have the arts in your county?
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
And then the same in Hawaii, mahalo. Mahalo. Thank you. You guys were great.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and adopt the agenda, but I do need to make an addition. If we could add for item B, or 5B7, under Human Resources, the approval of William Lance Fletcher Jr. as supervisor of Educational Technology. And with that, if someone could make a motion including that for the adoption of the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent with change to Section 5B7, additional.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Ms. Counts, to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent with the following condition. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries 5-0. And citizens' comments? Do we agree with that? We'll have another opportunity at 5:15 and then at the end of business. And with that, move to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Ms. Powers, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0, and if I could read the donation documents.
Yes, sir. Approve the carpet swing crest valued at $1,500 to TPC Systems. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from the Kiwanis Club of Inverness. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from J.M. Gibson Mechanical. Approve the $3,000 grant Christopher River High School from the Arnold and Diane A. Ross Fund. Approve the $1,000 donation to Christopher River High School from Crystal Rock Art Company, Inc. Approve the $500 donation to Christopher River High School from Sam's Global Home Services. Approve the $1,200 donation to Lookeyo Technical College, WTC, from Citrus High School, Citrus, excuse me, Citrus County Crews, Inc. Approve the $2,000 donation to WTC from Citrus Hills Women's Club, Inc. Approve the $500 donation to WTC from the Ladies Auxiliary, Knights of Columbus, Abbott Francis Sander Council, 6168. Approve the $1,000 donation to WTC from Citrus County Chamber of Commerce Business Women's Alliance. Approve the $1,375 donation to Lookeyo Technical College from REC Educational Foundation, Inc., Lookeyo River Electric. Approve the $1,000 donation to WTC from the Rotary Club of Inverness Charitable Foundation, Inc. Approve the donation of various items with an estimated value of $1,500 to WTC from Duke Energy. Approve the $3,000 donation to WTC from the Citrus County Veterans Coalition. And approve the $1,250 donation to WTC from Lookeyo River Electric Education Foundation, Inc. That is a total of $20,825 donations.
Outstanding, and we thank all of our community partners who make such a difference in our classrooms and our schools. With that, moving on to Educational Services.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I come for approval to approve the Citrus County Health Services Program Contract.
Well, members, do you have any questions before someone makes their motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Counts, to approve the Citrus County Health Services Program Contract. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
Next, I ask approval of the additional wording for the 2018-2020 School Health Services Plan Regarding Behavioral Health Services.
Any questions before a motion? I'll take a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Powers, seconded by Ms. Counts, to approve the additional wording to the 2018-2020 School Health Services Plan Regarding Behavioral Health Services. Any questions or comments? Agreed.
Yes, and I didn't pull this, but obviously I know our collaboration with parents and parent commission forms, all that's very important and part of this to me, so I just want to make sure I know that probably doesn't need to be said, but that is an expectation, obviously, that the plan is followed, and the communications are with parents, and so just really focus on that.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
Next, I ask to approve the contract with achievement rehabilitation through therapeutic intervention for physical, occupational, and speech-language therapist therapies.
Approve the contract for achievement rehabilitation through therapeutic intervention of physical, occupational, and speech-language therapies.
I sort of pulled a lot of things, but they all had the same questions to them, and I asked the students to lay it.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a statement beforehand.
Do you want to go ahead and do that now? No, you go right ahead.
So prior to discussing this matter, I'd like to inform the board that Jim O'Pugue perceived a potential conflict of interest in that my wife, Flora Dodd, has a contract for part-time employment with achievement rehab, and it's such an outstanding ability pursuant to statute 112.3143 as I perceive a potential conflict in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. This is the time of year that I come to you requesting approval for a variety of contracts. And so Ms. Powers and I had a conversation the other day, and she just thought it would be a good opportunity for me to kind of clarify any questions, or some questions that have come up. So several things that she asked me to specifically mention to you, is first, the question of private school students. One of the things that we are obligated to do, whether a student is in our schools, a private school, or a charter school, is to support their records. Every year, in May, as it turns out, we have an annual meeting with the leadership of our private schools throughout our county, and we discuss what services we are prepared to offer. And I'm not quite sure how many years it has been, but in the recent history, we have offered speech and language services to those students. And so we have one of our specialists, Robbie Garvin, is our lead specialist that goes to each of those private schools and handles not their IEPs, but their service plans, because students in a private school do not have an IEP. But they do have to meet the same qualifications to have speech and language services as any of our students in any of our public schools. So, for example, a student at Inverness Primary School has to go through the same testing as a student at the private school. And so we have to basically prove that we provided interventions and supports, and then whether or not they had a discrepancy in the case of speech or language. One of the things that gets confusing when you're talking about speech, or language, or maybe even occupational or physical therapy, is there's also a medical model out there. And a medical model is something that a doctor would approve, and they would say that this child needs services for medical reasons. But that doesn't mean that they have services for educational reasons. And the bar for medical reasons are much lower than for educational. So it has to have educational relevancy. So that's how students are selected. I will tell you that Ms. Garvin manages about 120 service plans throughout our county, and that number does fluctuate. But that's how students are selected to receive speech and language services at the private school. Any other questions about that aspect? Absolutely. And we have to explain that to parents all the time. As a matter of fact, I don't want to give anything away, but that's typically one of our interview questions when we talk to therapists, about how do you explain this to parents? Because parents need to have a clear understanding, because they don't understand why they can have these services from the doctor, but not necessarily be eligible within our schools. The second thing that Ms. Powers asked me to touch on was the issue of Medicaid funding. Now, one of the things, just so that you're aware of, we are involved in, or we are offered the opportunity to have two types of Medicaid supports for our students. One of them is a fee-for-service, and the other one is administrative planning. I don't profess to be an expert on these, but basically what happens is a student, in order to have, for the educational model, to have any reimbursement or any funding, they do have to have an IEP. So if you have a student who doesn't meet the educational eligibility for speech or articulation, for example, but they meet a medical one, they would not be eligible, because they wouldn't have an IEP for speech. So in our system, we can get, it's honestly pennies on the dollar, but we get some reimbursement for Medicaid. But the student does have to have an IEP, and they do have to have a qualifying therapist that's working with them. Now, there's also other areas that students, that we can get some reimbursement, and those include some counseling services, but there are stringent requirements about the qualifications of the people that are supplying those services. So that's, again, kind of a one-sentence summary on Medicaid. I'd be happy to come back with a fuller explanation, perhaps have a workshop, if that's something that you're interested in, so we can talk a little bit more about Medicaid funding in general. And then the last thing that Ms. Powers had asked me about was just the whole issue of the pay for these people. So before I go through the individual contracts and kind of explain what we are requesting as far as funding, please know that we are very cognizant of the fact that we would much, much, much prefer to have Citrus County employees providing these services for our kids. We feel that despite us not having direct hire, as we call them, services, we are confident that the services that we are providing through our contracts, our contractual people, is at a high level. And so we do go out, we do see what they're doing, we do talk to the people that they work with to ensure that they are providing the services that we're putting them to do. As a matter of fact, and this probably you may already be aware of, we've been trying to work with Citrus County Education, excuse me, Association, to try to increase the supplements for our school psychologists and for our speech and language pathologists. We started there, because both of those groups are on the instructional scale. And some years ago, back in about 2008, we wound up dialing back the amount of supplement that those people received when we were in another budget crunch time. And it was a good decision at the time, but now we are 11 years later, and we're not having any success with getting new people through direct hires. So we are working with them, we do have another meeting at the end of July. We have shared with our CCA the rates of pay for surrounding districts. But you need to know that somebody could go to Hernando County, so I'm not talking about a big district far away.
That's true.
Yes.
Please.
I know there's several other items, I'll be getting some of these items that I'd like to discuss too, but I know that the motion deals with one issue with achievement rehab, and I know we're kind of, she's covered a lot of questions, but I might have some other things to talk about. Could we...
Could we vote on that, so that you can have those questions? Is there any objection to doing that?
No, no.
Okay, let me state, because I didn't get a chance to state the motion, just to remind everyone. I have a motion by Ms. Counts, a second by Ms. Bryant, I believe, is that correct? To approve the contract for achievement rehabilitation through therapeutic intervention for physical, occupational, and speech-language therapy. Any questions or comments on that item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. There you go, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for doing that, because I, Mr. Dodd, I forgot too, because that's, and I know you, that's an abstaining you've done. So that's routine for you and I, for anyone looking or listening.
So we then, are we able to move on to the next, because I have several.
We'd like her to continue.
And that's the last point.
And that's fine. The reason we did that is Mr. Dodd isn't able to ask any questions on that previous motion because of the conflict. Now that that's over, he can ask general questions on it. So that's why, Dr. Bieber, just so that you know.
Yes. So just to wrap it up on the supplement issue, we are working to increase the supplements. We have not approached increasing the supplements or increasing the occupational or physical therapists yet. They're on the support staff payroll, or excuse me, side of the scale. And so we have not broached that, but it is an issue, and I welcome suggestions and ideas, if you have one. Please.
What is the, when they leave us, what do they get paid for? From the staff or something?
I want to say, I have an occupational therapist that we actually contract one day a month, who's a former employee, and I believe her range is about $35 an hour. But she was with us for about 25 years. So, but I don't have that information. I can get it?
Are they self-contracted when they leave?
So, okay, so the person that I just spoke of was a direct hire. And so that is her hourly, that was her hourly rate when she left us. So she's not contracting with us in any way, she was a direct hire. It's what we pay her, yes, ma'am. What these, what the achievement, well, she left us because she retired.
But you can have others leave for an extra $9.
Maybe somewhere else.
And I don't have that information well enough.
What do we contract them for?
We are contracting them for about $60 an hour.
That's, that's what I think.
Right. But I would think they're not getting a full $60 an hour.
So even in 25 years, they were potentially, it was $35 versus we're paying them $60.
But what we pay, when you say the $35 an hour, and I am not getting the supplement, but we still pay all of their health insurance.
Absolutely.
All their benefits. We pay their mileage.
They're not giving that old $60.
Right.
Yeah, even the achievement, for example, any of those contracts, they're, we're not giving them mileage. The only thing we give them is old laptops, and it's because it's easier to get on our network with our old laptops than it is with their new whatever. That's really the only.
But I'm just saying, it's not a true comparison, it's only $60 to $35. That $35, we can add quite a bit of money to what we paid them, so it's really not $25 an hour.
I absolutely agree. And I, my understanding is that Mr. Walker had done an analysis and said that basically it's cheaper for us to do contract work, than have somebody direct hire, because once they get that number of years in, then they're at a higher daily rate, and then also the benefits on top. I don't have that in front of me to prove that.
Do we have any full-time OTs and PTs right now?
Yes, I have one full-time OT that we actually just hired this spring. And we were, I feel lucky to get her, she's a young one. So she didn't have as many years in to lose, and so she will be able to grow with our system. And we have one physical therapist that is a direct hire. And she's been with us off and on for probably about, pretty close to 20 years, 15.
But speech therapists, we have more, more speech therapists, full-time speech therapists.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we have, right now, I'd say about 14 direct hire speech therapists.
And if we find the hours that they spend doing what we want them to do, if it's more than if we get to go to a company.
Absolutely.
We all have hours, or we can do what we wish to do in terms of having to have four people, two people, one person, depending on what the company regulates.
Well, one of the things, well, their company won't regulate it that way, just so that you know. They, they will do what we ask them to do. One of the reasons why we do have the occupational therapists coming in once a month is for her, as our former employee, for her to come in and oversee. She checks all the IEPs, she checks all the schedules, she checks all the notes, and to make sure that we are supplying services. Because I don't have a background in occupational physical therapy. And I felt that asking somebody from a contract to come in and oversee that was kind of the Fox watching men house sort of thing. And so did not want that. So this, again, is somebody that works directly with us.
So you also mentioned in reference to the instructional pay scale, our OTs, PTs, speech therapists are not on the instructional side, but you said our school psychologists are, which I'm aware of. What was the other one that you mentioned?
Speech and language are also on the instructional.
Oh, speech and language are on the instructional.
Yeah, it's just confusing. The occupational physical therapies are more on the support side.
But yet, if we were to be able to move the speech and school psychologists off of the instructional contract, we can be more competitive?
We would have to do an analysis to make that decision. It's an issue not just Citrus County.
So if we were to move the speech therapist and the school psychologist off of the instructional.
Could we be more competitive?
Competitive in the markets.
Because I think the first thing is, is it would be, that it wouldn't be tied to instructional, so it would allow us that flexibility to do that.
Right.
As opposed to, yeah, just keeping it under the others. So, yeah, and I would think that there is potential to that.
Especially in the psychology side, right? Because there's a need that we didn't fill the social workers with, or the tired social workers, and we need psychologists.
I consider what you just said, that we're talking about a million hourly wage, no benefits.
We would still have, we would still have to operate within your confines of your budget.
Sure.
The question Stan asked about what is, what is the private pay, so you've asked psychologists, psychologists, private pay. Because I have a friend who works in psychology, and it's $250 an hour. She charges. Anything that goes down to $100, kind of like how it's up, much more in a week. So being able to have that flexibility, we'd be able to get some people in. Now, we could.
Is it your desire that we would start exploring that, because we would be concerned with our labor terminus process?
For members, it's your thing, I certainly am open to that conversation.
I would, I know Dr. Bieber had mentioned that last week he was going to be looking at some other counties and how they operate, that, but I think it has merit that we should explore that.
I don't think we would be out of the ordinary from what Dr. Bieber had said to us before to have some of those classifications of staff members as not part of the instructional unit. One question that just, and I think you answered it, but I just was trying to get my head around it. So when we have contract service versus direct hires, does that change us being able to go after reimbursement for Medicaid?
No, they're, they do a great job billing for Medicaid.
So they do a direct billing of that? And does that offset then what we're charged by them? Or does that mean either we wouldn't be charged for those additional services, or does, how does that impact it?
We're reimbursed through the general fund from the Medicaid side. So it doesn't offset what I'm paying achievement rehab, for example.
Okay.
But, but it is a requirement that they bill for all their Medicaid services.
So they bill, and then we don't have to do the billing portion of it? We don't get, you know, we don't have to have our people do the coding or any of those if, when the contract service does it?
Well, and we don't, we expect our therapists across the board to do that on their own. And so they solve through civic solutions. So there's the same process as what our people follow. We try to hold them to the same level of accountability as we do for our own people. And we include them in all of our meetings. We have, for example, speech and language has monthly meetings. Occupational therapists and physical therapists have quarterly meetings. And we hold them to the same standard as we do any of our directives.
But the reimbursement then comes back to us?
Comes back.
Okay, that's, that's. So it does go, come back to our general fund as a, whether it's contracted or whether it's direct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, and I'm glad to elaborate on anything, you know, we just had a little sidebar before, so this is just kind of off the cuff as far as responses. But if you have any more detailed questions, we can certainly get those answers and bring that data with us for a future, perhaps, for a workshop.
If you're interested, this is the last one.
Absolutely. And we're happy to, to explore this further.
I think we're on item T.
Need to vote?
No, we voted on that one. That was the one thing you though. No, no, I'm glad you are watching for us.
Before Ms. Kirby sits down, she has a member of her team that is new, that I know you've approved prior, that she'd like to introduce, if I can indulge.
Absolutely.
So it's my honor to introduce Mr. Gary Piercy and welcome him back to Citrus County Schools. We're excited to have him here. He's going to serve as our ESE coordinator.
He did. And you asked a question, I was doing research on every place in the whole world, and I wanted to ask you to give the answer back. I tried to spend hours.
I did that.
You're setting the bar high.
Hello, Ms. Bryant.
We serve time and credit, don't we? Ms. Powers, good to have you, because Mr. Moore was just stopping and bothering your song. Good going, Mr. Moore.
Ms. Counts, you'll appreciate this, Mr. Piercy's also a swim dad, and he's also been working as, as a, he does, starting in some of our high school swim meets, and we've, we've taken him on, so.
Every year for the past four years, at every swim meet that Mr. Kennedy has been at, he would say, "Are you coming back? Are you coming back? Are you coming back?" And so I'm back. So thank you, thank you for your assistance.
I'd like to move for approval of the contract with Jessica Harris Interpreting Services Incorporated.
The motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the contract with Jessica Harris Interpreting Services Incorporated. Any questions or comments? This is our signing?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
And there was a time that we probably had about a dozen interpreters, we were down to two. Luckily, we had two students that do require sign language interpreting at this point in time. But if we had that one walk in the door, we have to have this. I can tell you, from this budget last year, I don't think we even spent $500. So my hope would be that we'll be able to return that to you intact, but that's a, we have to have it on standby.
And it has been very successful, though, when we have students. I have seen so many of our students, a lot of the ones that you referenced that we had at one time, they graduated very successfully. They're in college, and I just, this district does an amazing job. So with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to ask for approval of the contract with Gardner Audiology for Audiological Services.
Just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Gardner Audiology for Audiological Services.
I think I heard Ms. Counts. I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Counts to approve the contract for Gardner Audiology for Audological Services. Any questions or comments?
Exhibit A is.
I know that typically Exhibit A is the actual name of the person who's going to be providing the service. Looking at this one to see what exhibit is.
It's the cost sheet. It's like the copy records, your hearing impression.
That's the fee that they charge us.
So they do those things to the students?
Those are things that they have available at Gardner Audiology. Pretty much what they do, we're required to have students have their hearing tested, I want to say once every three years? I believe so, I was checking with my ex-compadre over there. And so if the parents are not able to do that, we do have to do that. It used to be done through Sertoma before, when we had Sertoma that was here over in the Beverly Hills area. And since they've left, we were able to find Gardner Audiology, they do a phenomenal job. We always have one of our employees with the student when they go, as well as the parent. And so it's been a great seamless service, and they've done a good job for us.
So for us, a test, if they just provide this, if something came up, so they do change it for us.
Exactly, and I think that's just their, their typical fee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. It's the superintendent's fault.
Next, I'd like to ask to approve the contract for A. Chodo Physical Therapy LLC.
Do we approve the contract for A. Chodo Physical Therapy LLC?
A motion by Ms. Counts, a second by Ms. Powers to approve the contract for A. Chodo Physical Therapy LLC. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Next, I'd like to ask to approve the contract for Shelton Speech Therapy Services LLC.
Move approval?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve the contract for Shelton Speech Therapy Services LLC. Any questions or comments? And is this additional service coverage or?
No, Ms. Shelton provides SMP services for our students at Plural City Elementary School. So she's there three days a week and supports our pre-case and fifth grade kids.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, to be simple, you have to figure out psychologists or other things. Also, the figures that about superintendents and superintendents. And then some of them make $3,000, $5,000 a year. And I don't need a tremendous use of sources, I mean, just an average source. And they get a car on the road, not like white, they get a wheel car.
In which, you chair?
Missouri.
Missouri?
They have a bigger tax base than Superstate.
They're serious about their.
Okay, great. Next, I'd like to ask approval of the Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan for 2019-2020.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the mental health, I'm sorry, the Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan for 2019-2020. Any questions or comments?
I had a couple of questions on this.
And I have Ms. Greco here to respond, so.
Doctor Yan.
Hello. So, you know, as I look over the plan, obviously, we have funding on an allocation basis, $434,000. We're in that, and we're spending $380,000 or more on salaries for, for social workers and program specialists for behavioral health. As I was looking through the plan, there's a lot of good information in here, obviously, about how we're going to deal with, with mental health issues. It's just a part of what we're doing, right? To make sure that we're addressing mental health needs for our students. But there are some programs in here, I know that the Teen Safety Matters Program and the School Connect Program are both new programs, correct?
Well, new to us, they will be new to us, they're not new in general. Correct, yes. So School Connect is something that we're implementing in all of our middle schools. And this will be done on a tier-one basis, so we're looking at for all students. Each school, well, two of the schools are kind of doing it similarly, and the other two are doing it the same as well. Some of them are doing it through PE, where they're going to be having the students through the PE class be in the classroom and go through the weekly lessons. And, you know, they're changing off from what they typically would do in PE to what they're doing in the classroom. Another two schools are doing it through an extended homeroom. So each teacher will be delivering, each teacher who has a homeroom first period will be delivering that instruction. So Ms. Humboldt and I are working with the company to bring trainers down, to train our staff, and to provide the materials. So the funding that you see for middle school, and we include it a little bit extra, because we're hoping that some of our high schools are going to use it as well in some other social skills classes. So we provided funding for that as well.
And can you tell me a little bit about the Castle Social, Emotional Learning Experience Competencies? Obviously, you've seen this program.
Yes.
I have to recommend it to the board, and it's been mighty on the program, so.
Correct, we actually saw it last summer, I believe, for the first time. And one of the developers actually came and presented and was very motivational and very encouraging. In fact, in some of the trainings, he did some of the activities that the students. In fact, in some of the trainings, he did some of the activities that the students would do in the classroom with the group, so we got to experience that. We've looked through all the lessons. We've discussed it with our middle school principals, and I've actually showed them what the lesson would look like, some of the activities that they would be doing. It also, one of the things that we really liked about it was it not only hit on those social-type skills, but it also embedded engagement skills. So, lots of collaboration between peers. Lessons were starting off from, you know, very, can be very scripted for the teachers, but there's also a lot of additional resources for them to add in depending upon maybe the feedback from the students, their comfort level. So, there's a lot of growth we see within that. And I just, it just dawned on me when you said that, Crystal River High School actually started using this a little bit older version several years ago. And when I asked to borrow the binder from them, the teacher said, "Will you please give this back to me because I want to be able to use it next year?" So, it is something that our teachers, the ones that were aware of it, really were responsive to, and our principals also are very responsive to it.
So, do you think there's going to be some comparisons? Because we talked about it, we've talked about it so far. They're doing it in different ways, PE and...
Right.
I mean, is there a chance that one of those, I mean, is it going to work better? Are the demands really clear? I mean, it's not going to take an entire period of PE, is it?
Well, the lessons are typically around forty-five minutes, so it won't take an entire period, but they don't want, so say there's two or three PE teachers running classes at the same time, they don't want to do it with all three of those classes. So, one of those classes, a typical class size, would come into the classroom for that lesson.
But so, the extended homerooms, one of those other two measures are going to be once a week for additional three, five? So, they're going to change the schedule?
They're going to count for within the extended homeroom in first period. It's something the schools feel very strongly about, is addressing this with all of their students. So, they're really trying to find creative ways to make it work along with doing all the other things that are required to do. We're excited about it. We're very excited about it, and I think you made a valid point. It'll be interesting to see which type of integration has more of an impact. Of course, we'll be looking at our typical things that we look at with behavior, so, you know, office discipline referrals, OSS, ISS, we're expecting to see impacts and all of that, positive impacts. Some of the things that are also included are kind of climate surveys, so the students anonymously can fill out surveys, so we can get students' feedback on what they feel like is beneficial to the program.
And they'll tweak it as they go.
Oh, absolutely.
If it's not working in first period, then the schools would actually... Like, right now, they feel something that based on how the school operates, this is the best program. And then the high school program?
Yes. So, high school, I've actually been working with one of the high school deans just recently because I feel like they were doing some things within the homeroom, morning shows, and then having the homeroom teachers also follow up with that same message. But I feel like we can be more consistent and maybe develop a more robust program. So, our plan is to get those high school, those people that will be responsible for that on their campus, typically their deans, some assistant principals, together to pull the resources they already have and see what additional resources they feel like they're missing, really focusing on character development, use and abuse, those types of topics that are more prevalent in the high school. So, they are doing things already, but we feel like we can make some more consistency happen across the campuses and alignment. So, when your students are going from school to school, because we know we have transient populations sometimes, you're not seeing something completely different.
And then on the Teen Safety Matters, that's going to be run through Jessie's Place or some other...
Correct. Middle school is where our focus is for that.
And can you talk a little about that?
Sure.
And hire someone?
Yes, they are going to be hiring somebody, so this is again at no cost. So, while it's one of the programs that we are implementing tier-one, it's not actually, we're not spending any allocation as far as funds on it. But they have emotional safety, which will be for all sixth graders, digital safety, which will be seventh graders, and then physical safety, eighth graders. This will happen in about forty-five minute lessons, three times a year, so the students will be getting it throughout the school year. We haven't isolated exactly when this will be delivered to these, I say what period or which class, but what we are leaning toward is maybe a science, so that way we know every sixth, seventh, and eighth grader is taking a science, so we can be sure to hit as many students as possible with this as well.
And, you know, one of the things that I talked to you was our high school focus on mental health, and, you know, we don't have a whole lot in here for high school. And, you know, that's a good question. I don't really know the answer, but what can we do or what should we be doing on the mental health side for our high school students? You know, we have that character education program that we've had, and I sometimes, I'm not sure how many students are plugged in. I do a lot of time, I know students I've talked to are plugged in in the morning, are plugged into the listening, those things.
Well, and I think when I say consistency as well at home in the high school, it's also making sure that those teachers and administrative staff, it's also important to them, so that they're seeing something being done in the classrooms as well. I can tell you as far as the staffing, typically, our high schools will have one social worker where some of our middle schools and definitely our elementary schools still share them, so we try to, a lot more full-time staff there. They have more counselors, so they have four counselors at each of the schools. In addition, we have, recently, Crystal River High School has PACE helping to counsel some of the students, the female students out there. And of course, if we're moving forward very, hopefully very swiftly with our Light Strings Contract, and with that, we hope that we'll be able to have more outside referral sources for our high school as well.
We've also had the required, and it's not a requirement, is to have the Health and Wellness Course.
Yes.
But we've utilized that, I think, pretty broadly and very effectively in that. I know there's some groups that might disagree with our approaches on it, but I think, I believe this board and more importantly, the school district has utilized that time effectively and has at least tried to. And that's a part of the piece that sometimes we forget, but it's required. Usually, it's the freshman students that get that as soon as they get into school.
And I was in meeting, I was always, teachers looks at the mental health first aid program that you all did, and I think, I'll say there's going to be some more of those offered.
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Because that was, you know, several, I mean, a couple of teachers in there, so I don't, it was already filled. We couldn't fit it, so I know, but I wasn't, I couldn't remember when those programs were going to be offered again.
We're scheduling them throughout the year. We're trying to actually do what we can to schedule them on non-student days or days that maybe, or, you know, the district is open, but teachers don't typically work. We will also utilize subs, but we know what that's like trying to find subs during the year. We don't want to pull teachers out of the classroom as much as we can, but we do feel like it is important. We're also looking at not only just teachers, but support staff, clinic staff, transportation. We're finding ways to train all of those staff, and that's why we have allocated funding towards that, knowing we're going to have to pay stipends and substitutes for people's time to be able to attend those trainings. So, yeah, that will be ongoing. It's a three-year cycle, so we've trained about four hundred or two hundred, I didn't hear, staff, and then I anticipate we're going to be training a lot more this year and then that third year, we're hopefully catch all the rest.
Ms. Counts.
About, at page one, it says that after they have the interventions with the school-based PST, that it's going to be put in Skyward. And, you know, I'm about, we can't do this in isolation, you know, the kids got six or seven teachers during the day, and so, who's going to have the ability to see these interventions and follow through with them throughout the whole day? All the teachers are...
Well, it depends on who's going to be providing those interventions. So, it is a panel in Skyward. I don't know if all teachers are looking at Ms. Androski. The staff that, there are several staff at the school that have access to that panel, but all teachers, we've talked about this, and that all teachers need to be aware of what interventions the students are receiving. I'm thinking you're thinking more middle and high school level.
Right.
Because you may not have, you know, all seven teachers today in those problem-solving meetings. So, yes, making sure that they're aware they're getting interventions and also know what to look for. So, if there is a concern that we're aware of, that that teacher knows, that they can become aware if something doesn't seem right.
At least this, the PST will at least include...
Yes.
...the teachers, so the teachers are following.
And I will verify that access, and if not, we will develop a way that all the teachers are made aware. I appreciate that.
It is, and that problem-solving team approach, I mean, should look at attendance. I know that's in there, but, you know, especially that early warning for elementary kids, that, you know, the attendance portion of that is a critical part, I think, or the warning system.
Right.
And that was, you know, as the schools, that was one of the strategic planning sessions I was at, they were talking about attendance, you know, how can we, you know, what are our avenues to increase our attendance with our students into that at elementary school? So, you know, it is, it's, that role is very challenging because, I mean, they talk about, you know, the teachers talk about, you know, calling and making contact, the teacher making contact, and then, you know, one of the, one of the points is, well, sometimes, some people will block the school number because they don't want to get a call from the school. And then when the teacher needs to call about something else, why is the number blocked? You know, and I thought, well, I didn't know that could happen, but, but I'm glad to see attendance is being...
Yes, attendance. And elementary is challenging with attendance because so much of that is, the students can't get to school currently, so it's a bring of a valid point. And just going back to your Skyward, it's not specifically in this, but one of the, another change is that if the student comes into our district already receiving some sort of mental health-type services, we're required to continue providing those until our school team can meet to determine what they feel is best for that student. So, using a system like this will help with that tracking between districts as well.
And I would say that if any of us were questioning whether we're glad that you're still in our district and in our role, the answering and handling of these questions is a perfect example of that, so we are glad that our district still benefits by, from you, Ms. Greco.
I appreciate that. I can't say I don't miss my ESE folks, but luckily, they're not far away, so we collaborate very closely.
One of the things that you've said that, and it may not be a question that you have mentioned before now, a lot of the pieces that you just talked about, especially the elementary and middle school level and even some of the high school level, there are parts that used to be part of the FOCUS curriculum, the SRO curriculum, and I wonder where is that coming together? I mean, like, you talked about Jessie's Place, which I think there's a law enforcement connection there to Jessie's Place. There was at one time. I don't know, does Jessie's Place still have a law enforcement connection?
Really, just how much you say?
So, yes, so my question would be is, where does the SRO curriculum, you know, either mesh with it with what our strategies are? Hopefully, they don't conflict. Hopefully, you know, in some ways, we're either reinforcing and not conflicting with each other. And that's just, because again, I heard some pieces of this, you know, social media, you know, relationship parts of it, and that's the only thing, yes, we've got a lot of moving parts now, and I think to make sure that we have coordinated messages and not conflicting messages, because the kids will pick up on those conflicting messages and then they will just zone out of those pieces.
And we have had those discussions, especially at the middle school level with the Teen Safety Matters, because it came up, what about what the SROs are doing? So, Ms. Humboldt's actually working with her contact over there to see the lessons to go through, so she has a better understanding, so we can make that correlation.
Perfect.
So, we're not duplicating or reinforcing the same message, however we want to approach that.
And the FOCUS program is still, still with strong, right? There's nothing...
No, but you, but when you look at some of this, you don't want it to be conflicting because a lot of it is the same stuff, it's just expanded of what the FOCUS program had. It's just that if we're doing it, we don't want to be duplicating unless we are reinforcing.
Correct, with the same...
And with the same information. So, that's really, I know that truly puts it on your department.
That's okay, I appreciate it. Set the challenge.
Any other questions? With that, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero, and thank you to Ms. Bryan. We are going to recess our regular meeting and we will open our public hearing and go into policy, and I'm sure that's Mr. Dixon. Please, Mr. Dixon.
We only have one today. This one is a revision to Policy 4.72, public hearing. This matter was discussed on February 21st and presented to the school board for a workshop on the 23rd. The revision is to Section 1A3 to remove foster care from the policy. Students are under foster care now covered by the Every Student Succeeds Act, so it's no longer necessary to be in the policy.
I'm going to just go ahead and ask for public input. If there's anyone here wishing to speak on revisions to Policy 4.72, homeless students, anyone wishing to come forward? Last call. If that's somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt revision of Policy 4.72, homeless students. Will you adopt it, please?
Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Counts to adopt the revisions of Policy 4.72, homeless students. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. An approval of the 2019-2020 Code of Student Conduct. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak on the 2019-2020 Code of Student Conduct? Anyone wishing to come forward? Last call. If anyone would like to make a motion.
I move approval of the 2019-2020 Code of Student Conduct.
Motion by Ms. Bryan, second by Ms. Powers to approve the 2019-2020 Code of Student Conduct. Any questions or comments? Mr. Dodd.
One comment on this digital access, because I just want to make sure we're all clear with it. It's going to be, access digitally, the schools are going to have some hard copies, though. Is that how they were going to do that this year?
That was my understanding.
Anyone can request. Anyone can still request a hard copy, but we are going to push that out digitally this year, which I think is a good idea. But I just, you know, when we do something different, we're probably going to hear a lot of, you know. So, I just wanted to make sure we've covered the bases on that process because we do have an obligation to get the Code of Conduct to them, so.
It is going out digitally. It will be advertised, you know, at the beginning of the school, they're putting in their newsletters, on the webpage. Well, even Lindsay will put it, you know, on the webpage, and then, yes, we're having copies printed for those that request it.
Okay. And if a, if a parent were to go into a school and register their child, I mean, I think we talked about this, they could, that might be a time where it could be offered to them in a hard copy, or if they were coming to school and asked for a hard copy, the schools will have them?
They will have them. Once this is finalized today and it's approved, we have the quote coming back from Pride, and then they know that our final, final copy is getting ready to come, so that they will be printing the copies for us.
There is a significant savings then, too.
Yes.
And Mr. Dodd, one of the things, and Ms. Androski, or somebody can verify this, is
in the past, it used to reside, the file could reside in multiple areas, and the school's webpages may not have updated. Now, I believe the way it is now, it propagates throughout the entire system, so we're not dealing with last year's model being on Crystal River's site, but, you know, La Canto's having the current one and so forth. Is that correct, Ms. Androski?
Correct. It will be housed in one site, and then we will just link to that initial, that one file. And in addition, we discussed earlier in the summer, I believe, about the fact that we will push it out to all student iPads, so that they will have a copy on their iPad.
I think that's really going to be huge because they can hit a button and have it, which is probably more likely they're going to have that in their backpack or something than they will the hard copy of the Code of Conduct.
Correct. And every school has some system in place where they have the students interact with it, so this will be helpful, it'll be on their device, and they can mark it up and take notes on it and do their scavenger hunts and so forth.
And will it be searchable, too? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay. I was really saying that more for myself, so. It's a little easier than just going through the PMS. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and open back up the school board meeting, and I believe we are on item five, which is Support Services and Human Resources. Ms. Wayne.
Here I am.
I ask the board to approve the instructional support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Our guardians are starting Monday.
They have, they have started as, as support substitutes, but all of them, we are pleased to announce, have passed their training background and all of the screenings, and they are officially starting. We will be starting with nine, correct, Chief? Yes, it was starting with nine.
Chief, and maybe you can say, so did they all pass the 85%?
Yes, absolutely.
Wow. That's instructor, I think you guys have explained, that's instructor qualified shooting.
They did a lot of shooting and they all did very well.
Excellent.
I know I heard a couple, I think it was Mr. Mullin and Mr. Bishop were talking about how they'll, they would, they'd feel pretty safe anywhere where these guardians are with their background, not necessarily just the guardian training, but the background of these individuals. So Chief, thank you.
Very impressive.
It's exciting. It's very exciting.
Mr. Kennedy was at the rest, at the county, the guardian came in with the yellow shirt, and on the back it had the guardian training. It's going to be, so what am I talking to the [inaudible] and he gave me this, and I thought, whoa, that's pretty good, you know, you're trying.
No, we are very excited to have them onboard now.
And I think, from what I can tell, these are people who could have gotten a job doing a lot of different things. They've chosen to be school guardians. That, they, their, their background and abilities could have allowed them a lot of opportunities. So it's exciting to know that these are not like, you know, well, as some people would say, these are just, well, they could make it somewhere else. These are serious professionals.
Absolutely. Every single one of them are. And we'll be writing them to a future board meeting, we'll give you brief synopsis of their background, so you can meet them. And I think when you hear the complete breadth of experience that all of these gentlemen bring to the table, to be very impressed with what we're bringing to our schools in the form of additional security.
And, you know, there's some districts that have been swearing in their guardians in a kind of ceremonial process, so if, I'd certainly be opening to any of that type of thing.
Sure.
So we'll leave that to you all. Thank you, Chief.
And some of our [inaudible].
Oh, wow.
And maybe isn't [inaudible].
Okay, I just need a motion.
I need to approve the support personnel and the [inaudible].
Second.
A motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Counts, to approve the instructional support recommendations. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
I ask the board to approve William Lance Fletcher as supervisor of educational technology effective July 10th, 2019. Oh, he's working on something. I'm looking for it.
I was too.
It's just here.
No, he's doing what Lance does best, which is run around and fix things.
Let's call him, [inaudible]. All right, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of William Lance Fletcher as supervisor of educational technology. Thank you, July 10th, 2019.
I have a motion by Mr. Goddard, a second by Ms. Counts, to approve William Lance Fletcher Jr. as supervisor of educational technology. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Mr. Fletcher.
He had his stuff out of [inaudible].
That's what I said, he's doing what Lance does. Have a good evening. Thank you, Ms. Swain.
Very good job, Ms. Swain.
Budget update. Find us some more money, find us some more money, find us some more.
Well, the tree is growing very nicely out back. All this raining, the money is just pouring in.
Very good.
So I do have to say that Mr. Fletcher, last year, during AFR budget time, I think about a month of Sundays, I had to call him at home to reset the server, and I was like, there's no way I'm getting the budget done unless you go in, as he would go in every Sunday morning and do that, so good choice. Budget update, we're kind of in the, in, right now, today, you're approving on your consented agenda to advertise the budget on July 30th. Ms. Swain's crew will be pushing over a new HR budget the end of this week, so we'll take those figures and re-massage everything with, now that we have more people in place and the guardians are there and, you know, Lance is there and all these positions are getting filled, so we'll take that. And then hopefully, sometime in the next week or two, the state will come down with the second calculation. They just posted the first one on the DOE website, since the governor just signed the budget. So once that comes out, we'll have all that ready and we'll bring it to the, to the board workshop on July 30th, review, approve a tentative budget, so that we have something to operate with until the September 10th. And I know there's been some questions about the gas plant and the property values. I just, I was going back and looking at what the values went up this year, and from the fourth calculation, or from 1819 to the June 1 estimate that they sent us, we did go up a little, about $900 million in property values. A billion dollars would equate to about 1.5 million in our capital. I know you had asked that. So if the, the property value should increase even more next year because of the gas plant, so if the values go up a billion, then we would get about one and a half million more in our capital outlay, we'd get about 750,000 more in our .748 discretionary.
And how much in our operational then amounts, other than the discretionary? So we're going to get a lot more money?
Well, it depends on what the, what the legislators decide to do with our village, so.
And they usually just pass that on to us the last couple of years?
No, not really. We went from 4.079 to 3.9, 3.915, so our village went.
So they rolled it back?
Yes.
So we don't get any advantage of that money?
Not, not in our operational funds, so. So that's just our update right now. I'll keep watering the tree out back and some money will grow. Are there any questions of me at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Turn your legal matters. Nobody's here for that. I think we're going to get some more updates on the SRO contract for next meeting.
Right.
So we'll be doing that then.
We're hopefully, hopefully finished by July 19th.
Rest of us are lighting candles. With that, move to approve the minutes, by someone?
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Counts, to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Citizens' comments, last chance. And actually, it is also 5:15, so we can do a second to the last chance. That works out great. I can even.
You're planning that.
I did, I wish I could say I did, but I didn't. And I, before I go, and Ms. Powers, I got to go back, because you mentioned the Missouri public school system, so I just happened to look up, because you said over 350,000 or so. So they have, we have 67 school districts in Florida, they have 567 school districts, that's on average of four schools per district, that they're getting paid 350,000. Our superintendent makes about half of that, literally less than half of that, except by the state of Florida, and for approximately 23 schools, plus if you look at some programs in that, so little difference in pay, tad difference. And with that, Dr. Heber, did you have anything? Mr. Bishop?
No, sir.
Mr. Mullin?
No, sir.
Mr. Goddard?
Yes. I attended my last, I adjusted the board meeting.
Right. I'm so happy, Ms. Counts. And did you explain to them?
Double check to make sure the letter went through.
Yeah, I actually made sure, I, you know, a copy of the letter, so.
Thank you.
And then I'll be the backup.
So they're going to just notify me?
Yes, you are, you will be notified of all meetings, I think the organization meeting is the last part of August, but you'll be getting all that information. You know, that's run through court courts, through Angela Beck's office, they do a great job, and you'll get a chance to go through a bunch of training materials, documents, and get to meet.
I did see it online, I did print it up. Mr. Goddard, did you explain to them how they inconvenienced you?
Well, it all worked out. We were good, we were good, but anyway, also, I did go out to guardian training one morning and was out at the range to watch that, that, those officers in their training and very pleased with what I saw there, and so I'm excited, I think it's a great move for the district, as we all have talked about, having an additional person available to respond in case of an active assailant. And I tell you, it certainly makes me feel a lot better from where we started with these positions, and I hope, you know, we'll continue to gather information and look at ways that we can continue a safety plan, and we'll go into details of that, but obviously, this board and superintendent takes school safety very seriously, and will continue to do so. Having an immediate backup on school campuses is a great thing, and I hope parents in this community realizes that. And we are having a safety and security meeting Thursday, and we're, you know, a good group on that committee as we look at the hardening of our campuses. As a member of the Marjorie Stonehenge Commission, I've been asked to do presentations for different groups. I did the presentation for a school board association, and now some other associations and counties are asking for information. You know, I got, thinking that, that's something I would really like to bring here to Citrus County and to do, to do an update and to maybe even look at inviting our, the [inaudible] county schools, school district and school board to come. So I've been, I've been talking a little bit, you know, and we can look at that, I'm going to, I wish Superintendent was here, but just to kind of work through an opportunity to do a presentation here in Citrus County, I, you know, I would like to look at Curtis Peterson, and I'm just kind of starting work on it with speaking to some individuals. But, you know, I think the more we learn and know, and the more the community knows about school safety matters, the better off it is for all of us, and I just wanted to bring that up to the board, that I, I'd like to start to look at that, and I know Mr. Bradshaw's not here, so I'm not really sure if, you know, I'm thinking more about presentation. I know you three were at the one in Tampa, Mr. Kenny wasn't there, but, you know, it's been well received and there's a lot of information, I think, when people can see a portion of that, they get a much better feel for the recommendations that the Stonehenge Commission recommended and for the legislation that's take, that's taken place. Just in talking to Mr. Mullin and Mr. Bishop, you know, we are working diligently in all areas to address safety matters, and I think from where I've seen with other counties and what I know that we're doing here, we're, we're well ahead of, well ahead of other counties, and I want to keep that focus, and I know this board is committed to that, but I just wanted to mention it because I'm, I'm going to be kind of working on that and maybe looking at it sometime in September, but just kind of started to do some work there.
[inaudible] being in public, not in the school, as I've asked, as I told you, you couldn't possibly present to the public?
And maybe that would be, you know, a part of this, too, that we could, back in the mic.
And I was just going to say, the audience probably that you have, the, you may need to adapt it based on whether their staff you're presenting, or, you know, like with board members, it's different than what you would do for the general [inaudible].
Yes, that's true.
But I know you know that that would be.
Yes, but I appreciate you mentioning that, because it would be something, you know, and there's people that are assigned full-time to the commission on the investigative side and [inaudible], and there's two others, two that I know of, that, you know, we've kind of put together a program, but there's a couple versions of it, so if the public would be there, that'd be a certain.
The commission's work is not done, if you recall. You all are, is it two-year?
Five-year.
Five-year commission.
So, you know, we've, we've got another meeting coming up in August and haven't got next year's meetings on the calendar yet, but there's, we've already talked about some needs, so that continues to look at that. Obviously, you know, there's a focus on mental, mental health issues now, but there's a lot that's going on down in Broward County still, that's going to be interesting here, and it's the rest of the [inaudible] this year, so.
Thank you. Thank you, [inaudible].
Yeah, my friend. I just want to say thank you to the people who presented and Dr. Heber, all the information that you gave. And who are describing this for you. They're very good. Excellent. So much information, so compact, they'll understand, so thank you.
Well, our babies are on their last 30 days, and now they'll all be back. And like I used to still go.
Did you mean our teachers or our students?
My teachers are coming back earlier, they're, they got less than 30 days, but I used to tell the teachers, I said, even if you're not ready, they're still coming. But I do, and Doug, I really want to thank you immensely, because I, we did attend that, and I'll tell you, like I said, I always come back to those state meetings really happy that I'm working in Citrus County, but still learned a lot from what you presented, and I think that level of awareness is just something that will make our kids even safer. So the more people that know, not exactly all of it, but, you know, just know what to do and do that, I think it would be really great to, and I welcome it here in Citrus County. And so the only thing I've got online, attended for the rest of the month, is school improvement plans, and I'm going to just pop into all four of my schools and spend about 35 or 45 minutes with them as they go through their school improvement plan, let them know that we're behind them. And still waiting for those, the state to tell us how, we've got the scores, but we don't know what they're going to equate to, but I'm always encouraged when I look at some of those, those scores of some of our kids, so hopefully we're going to have more than one or two A schools this time.
And speaking of scores, because that was a, certainly a lot of phone calls, and I know I had a bunch of kids contacting me saying, do you know, have my score, do you know my score? And I just want to thank research and accountability and lift out Amy Crowell, Stephanie Gardner, and John Mullin, man, that man, he clearly does not sleep, because he is here in the early morning. He will, I know one of the first persons my wife wanted to contact and talk to after she got her data was John Mullin, because he often breaks it all down and helps it, and that entire division does, because the data is no good by just having data. It's about what we learn from it and where we go. So thank you. And if you haven't seen the new district webpage, it's been a soft rollout, as Ms. Blair would tell us, but really some good things. It's a very rich, you know, looking page, it's got a lot of color to it, it's, it's got a lot of positive information. I just want to thank Ms. Endrowski and Ms. Blair for, and the multitude of others, thank you. It is, it looks wonderful. I know every day that I'm sure you're seeing stuff that you're always tweaking, but it, it's really, I think, going on the right step. And also, thank you to the multitude of districts, to the school, the district departments that are working behind the scenes to add information, so that the site is not stagnant, that it's updated, and that it's got that relevant information. SAC meeting dates, and I think it's Dr. Heber, we may, it was lifted out earlier, if we can just, I know you're doing this probably anyway, but if we can just have that conversation with administrators again about trying to make sure that school board members' meeting date, you know, that we're assigned to, that we are, we are able to attend them and they're not, you know, they're not the same dates, they're not duplicating them.
Ms. Douglas is working on that, so I'll speak to Ms. Douglas and have her address that.
And I know there's, sometimes we can do it, there's sometimes, you know, we just, we choose and rotate them, but I know we would desire.
With the planning now, with the strategic planning, it's hard, we can't separate it.
No, and I know that, I just thought it was brought up.
You're speaking the regular.
The regular board meetings.
The month.
Yeah, not the strategic planning. The strategic planning, I think a lot of us are planning on just rotating that day as best we can and hit our schools and spend a little time there and, you know, make ourselves available, and, and so that we can at least, you know, be, be available to our SACs if there's anything they need. I appreciate schools have been emailing us and just inviting us, and that just, you know, makes us feel welcome and encouraging, so thank you, Dr. Heber, for your role in that. I had a chance to go out of state this last week, and I was visiting some schools in Illinois. No, no, I'm sorry, Illinois. And it was interesting seeing the differing philosophy or the differing security. And it was interesting seeing the differing philosophy or the differing security. I was in a town very similar to an Inverness or Crystal River, and the school had open access. This was in Illinois. And it was interesting, you would think that what we're going to in Florida isn't any different. It doesn't matter whether it's Florida or Illinois or wherever. But you could access the school, you could access the facility. And it was clear that it wasn't just that I could access it after hours. You could access it very easily, probably during the day. It was also interesting, they had some, in some cases where the parking lots, there was street access. So you could literally go from one street or you almost did go from one street to another. It just is, is interesting because we're having conversations to try and improve all of those things. It was clear this is not even anywhere near your radar. So I appreciate Mr. Goddard and I just echo that same thing, that, that we are having those conversations. I have to say again, the school guardian program, I agree. I believe Citrus is a model. I'm having conversations with, because I do chair now on the leadership for Florida School Board Association. I think that our model and our approach is certainly one that other districts need to look at. Because when you look at our guardians, when you look at the training, not just the guardian training, but both the screening and the subsequent training, I do think Citrus is a model.
Mr. Grant, because of their abilities and the respect for him, the guardians just follow up on that.
They do. And it's interesting because I've had some conversation with some of them. They, they are so excited about serving in this role, which, I mean, this is not a job. This is truly a calling for them, and this is where they care about our students. And there are more than one that has skin in the game, like our, our SROs have for many years. You know, they're the very people that were the parents in some of the schools that they are constantly defending. I just really put this out there, it's, we've still got time, but that September traveling workshop that I'm, I'm talking about, be thinking about, you know, things maybe you would like to see. Capital projects, maybe, that we could add to the agenda that day to look at. You know, we approved today, achieved three thousand, achieved three thousand. I'd be interested in, you know, maybe incorporating, seeing what that looks like in, in the schools. Because I do think there's some really positive things that come from that. For a lot of us, it's just the name of a program, more than it is, you know, what it is. And it's doing some, some great things. And I happen to have a wife that's a big fan of it, and so she will say how it differentiates in the classroom. It'd be good. So maybe look at some of those things. And I think we'll be able to also, maybe we could add some of the guardian, of seeing some of the guardians on our campus at that time, too. So it's, it's, again, if you would maybe share out in one of our next meetings so that we can start putting together a list that we can share with staff so they can kind of put together that. That's all. I have, Mr. Goddard?
We're just talking about going to one location, right?
No, I was thinking, in the past, what we've done is we've done a tour. We've done a traveling meeting where we've gone, as you were on the board then. But in the past, we would go to multiple schools. We would, you know, and so that we could see that, you know, what, what is going on at some of those school and programs. Because it's different. And then if we need to, what we did before, we actually had then a actual meeting at one of the school's locations to do any school business. And I'm not saying this, but if it worked out where we did that, maybe in a student government class or something, that would be kind of interesting to incorporate that at one of the schools, too. That would be something that maybe we could do as that. So depending on how we coordinate. And it, and again, we, we can hold our meeting at any point during the day. So, and, you know, go in and out of the recess of the workshop. Just some things to think about. Yep, it's published and it's.
They need to follow us around?
It actually says what it is. Yeah, it says, it says what our tour is, and then, yeah, and then it says where our meeting's on. Yep. Crystal River High as well, we did, yeah. Yep. And then we had our actual board meeting with the ID students at Student Services and had that. So, so again, it's just something to be thinking about. Anything else before I adjourn? With that, we will adjourn. We'll see you all later.